Call the meeting to order. Call all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, all members are present. Approval of the agenda. Is there any changes? Counsel?
No.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion by Joe, second by Diane. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. Approval of the minutes of the June 7th, 2023 regular meeting, they're in your packet. Does anyone have any questions? Needs clarification or any corrections needed? Hearing nothing, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the June 7th meeting?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Heidi. I'll chair, I'll second it. Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. This now brings us to our public open forum. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council? Is there anyone that would like to speak to the council? Call a third time, is there anyone that would like to speak to the council? Our public open forum is closed, we have no public hearings. We'll move on to reports and presentations. Police Department Monthly Report, Brian?
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. Activity report for May 2023, some of the numbers, interesting numbers, we had five alarm calls, eighteen citizen contacts, we did twenty-two door checks, we did sixty-foot patrols, twenty-five matter of information, we did thirty medicals, we did two-hundred-and-sixty-five traffic stops, we had forty-six patrols at the school, we had thirteen accidents, fifteen assists for other persons, we did twelve welfare checks, we had eleven juvenile problems, eight driving complaints, six verbal disputes, thirty-two assists for other agencies. We did fourteen liquor license renewals. We gave seven tickets for using your cellphone while driving, eighteen tickets for no license, eleven tickets for driving with revoked or suspended license, we had five thefts. So we had a total of eight-hundred-and-twenty-six for the month of activity. Compare that to April, we were up one-hundred-and-twelve, and compare that to last year, we're up seventy-two. We have, later in the agenda, there you see Stearns County increased their fees eight percent for using them for prosecution. The new officer, Austin Kowalski, started June 7th and is in our FTO program, so we're getting him trained in. We have the bike tour coming through town tomorrow, they should be coming into town, staying at the fairgrounds, so we worked on any, if there's bad weather, where to put them. And then we have this weekend, the Chuck Ardern Sinclair, so we've been doing a lot of foot patrol through that area too, so that's about all I have.
Okay. Questions? Thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
Public Works Department, Ben?
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. Over the past month, we did cover all the streets with the first patch, pass for patching. Approximately a hundred-and-thirty tons of asphalt were used so far for those repairs. Crosswalks and parking lots are all painted. Library boiler replacement is completed, we do have one more valve that needs to be replaced in there, we have some time, obviously, before winter to get that done. Arena cleanup, we did have a couple of rental events, no issues up there after those. Sprinkler systems required some new valves, heads, and other miscellaneous parts to get up and running throughout the parks, but those are all working now. Campgrounds, some minor repairs to the bathrooms. Mowing is starting to slow down on the areas without sprinkler systems, so the seasonals are working on weed duty kind of around the buildings and different parks and things like that, spraying and pulling as needed. We are working with the art event for the weekend to do the street sweeping and the barricades. Fishing pier, DNR is, they're working on getting all the necessary parts to make the repair to the pier. I did hear back from them today, and they are going to start on it next week, so we'll have two or three guys helping them, and it'll probably take two or three days to tear it all apart. It does need a couple of new sixteen-foot steel sections and some new post brackets put on, so it'll be quite a bit of work, but hopefully we can have it back and in place by maybe Wednesday, Thursday next week is kind of the goal. JC Park, we are still waiting on the concrete blocks to get repaired on the dugout, I don't have a timeline on that, so hopefully I can find that out soon. Splash pad has been up and running since Memorial Day weekend, it's been working good so far. Hickman Park, the playground structure is now installed, we just need to finish putting in all the sand around the unit, and then we'll work on, if we do that Lakeview project, we're gonna have a curb cut put in for a kind of a trail access going up there, it's kind of the time to do it since we're doing that road, so we're gonna cut some dirt out to make that happen, and we'll use that as fill for the, for the playground. And the sidewalk inspection letters are starting to be sent out, so property owners will have until August 1st for new repairs, and after that, we'll schedule the contractor to come in and wrap anything up that isn't completed, so. Any questions I can answer for you?
Streets look great, Ben, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Ben. City Engineer?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Counsel. Been a while since I've been up here, but nice to see all you. Updates on the projects, Aerosmith, you do have a final pay request in the packet. Punch List on that project has been completed, IC-134 documents and other project documents have been received, and we recommend final payment for that. For the South Industrial Park, they still have a good list of stuff to take care of out there yet. They're working on the lift station controls this week, finishing those hopefully. They did some of the street patching, but some of the larger patching, they're gonna wait till, till the paver comes through with the final course to do that, just better with the machine. Some miscellaneous stuff on the storm sewer, silt fence, they did find a leak in the sanitary system, which was filling the structures, that was a drain from the valve vault to the wet well, was broke, so they dug down and fixed that and repaired that, so hopefully that's taken care of, and the site is seeded, but nothing's really growing yet, it's pretty dry, so I don't, I won't expect anything until this fall, hopefully it germinates, and if not, they'll, they'll be out there doing some rework. Second Street Project, Punch List is getting down there. They went through the gate valves and the curb stops this week, all those, the, there's been some concrete rework done earlier this spring, and we had some issues with that, with some, some of the testing, but it's been worked through and retested. Again, not having the best of luck with seeding out there, it's just been so dry. It is kind of green, for those that are watering, but I think we're gonna have to assess it this fall again, and see, kind of see where it's at, and see if there's any touch-up work to do, but I expect it to be paved in, hopefully, late June, early July. So hopefully that gets done, and things will look a lot nicer out there. Author's Edition, they're currently dewatering the stretch of Hendrix, so they're still pumping that down, and it's gonna take a little bit till it gets down to a level that they can get the utilities in. So now, maybe it was supposed to be next week, but maybe, or this week, but perhaps next, next week, they're thinking they'll be ready for utility installations out there, getting started with that. That's all I have for updates on those four. Take any questions, if you have any?
Questions? Comments?
South Industrial Park, the second paving out there was supposed to be done by last Friday, from what Keith told us last time, so unliquidated damages now?
Well, we can talk about those. Yeah, Keith's kind of got a handle on all that, so I would refer to him if those will be assessed, and I, I think he's, what he said before, at least, you know, on projects, there's, there has to be damages legally for, you know, to withhold those, so, but we can certainly look at that. And if, and if those are assessable.
Okay, so we got, we got that, obviously, Second Street, he was gonna check into the date that they were supposed to be done out there with that second layer, I know you mentioned late June, early July, do we have a date they're supposed to be completed by?
Yeah, June 30th, so if you remember that project, it was supposed to be a two-year project, and last year we did a change order to put it in one year, so we did, we did revise those dates, what they had, just with some concrete work, rework this summer. Verbally, you know, I mentioned to them, we can extend that a little bit, but I think it is their intention to, you know, pave soon here, so. And that is for, you know, final payment deadline, but.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Planning Commission?
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. In your packet you have a copy of the Planning Commission Agenda. We did hold a public hearing at our last meeting on June 13th, and we had a variance, and that will be an action item later in the meeting. You have a copy of the April and May building permit reports. This year in April, we're twenty-four permits for a total construction value of 1.3 million. A year ago, we were at 11.2 million. May, eleven permits, 291,000, and last year, forty-six permits for 805,000. As of almost the end of June, we've done 3.4 million dollars worth of new construction valuation, or construction valuation. Last year, we were at 10.7 at the same time, a year ago. So any questions about that?
Questions? Okay. Thank you. Move on to action items, 7A, approved agreement with Centricare for ALS transfers.
Okay, due to recent changes in Centricare's policy on utilizing nurses to ride in the ambulance for advanced life support transfers, a policy was developed that would outline how Centricare could deploy its Centricare service or a Mayo Clinic ambulance to provide that service until a future date when the city service could, city service could obtain its advanced life support license. The primary difference between a basic life support and advanced life support service is the ability to administer certain medications, and so in the past, what we've done when we've had ALS transfer is they have a nurse go in the ambulance, and then we pay, they, we pay the hospital for that service. Because of their staffing issues and also liability, they are being advised by their legal team to discontinue that practice, which is being discontinued on July 1st. So what was happened was this attached policy was developed through consultation with Centricare and the City of Melrose and the City of Sock Center, because the City of Melrose is in the same situation. It has been reviewed by the legal teams of all the entities. Beginning July 1st, whenever a Centricare doctor determines that a patient requires an ALS transfer, Centricare will request deployment of an ambulance through Centricare Emergency Medical Services and through their dispatch, which is a line of communications, and that would be rather than requesting the transfer via Sock Center ambulance, which is through Stearns County Dispatch. If and when Sock Center ambulance receives its ALS license, the workflow process will change, and it will give Sock Center ambulance first call. If a paramedic is available with Sock Center ambulance, we will take the call, if they're not, the next step is Melrose will get the second call, and if they're not available, then it will revert back to the Centricare, and this happens quite rapidly, so there's not really a time delay. This agreement is only for transfers, it does not authorize Centricare ambulances to take 911 calls in our service area unless we request them to do so. Both Sock Center and Melrose ambulance services have submitted applications to EMSRB for part-time ALS licensure. Sock Center currently has three paramedics on our service that would have the ability to take the ALS transfers. If it is anticipated that we will be able to grow that number of paramedics on the roster, however, until that time, this agreement is likely to be enforced. So because we have three on doesn't mean we're gonna get to take all ALS transfers, it just means that we have, if they are available at the time, so, and we've been in the process of talking about an ALS licensure now for, oh, probably five years about this point, and so we have submitted that license, but what this agreement does is allows Centricare's ambulance to come into our service area for those ALS transfers until the date when we're able to provide the service. And so what this is tonight is that we're asking to approve the ambulance transfer memorandum of understanding between Sock Center ambulance service and Centricare Emergency Medical Services.
Questions?
Do you have any questions on the agreement itself?
How long do you anticipate until we would find out that the, the license would be
They said it could be anywhere from five to nine months.
So at earliest this winter and at latest next spring?
Right.
Is some of that licensure also dependent upon getting a few more paramedics as well, or no?
No, we've already put on the, on the license application that we do have three, and to get a part-time one, you really only need to have one.
Okay.
So it's not incumbent on us to get more to get the licensure, but it would be our intent. And there's a procedure where people that are licensed nurses can have some of the requirements to become a paramedic waived because they have the same type of training, so we're also looking at that as an option. There are some nurses that like to take the transfers, and so it's possible that they could become a paramedic licensed with our service and, and be able to take them, so there's some, there's some options to grow that.
In that instance, if the, if the nurse is paramedic licensed and, and the, let's say that they are on staff and on the clock for Centricare at the time, are they allowed to take the transfer?
That would be Centricare's call.
Okay.
What, they've found in the past why the nurses, it's difficult to let the nurses go, was, you know, their primary, they're interested in the, in the patients that they have in the hospital or in their emergency room, and to take a staff person away from that, to go on the transfer was causing some issues there.
I see.
And so, and that is one of the reasons why they are no longer allowing the nurse to go along. But if they're on their own time, yes.
Okay.
If Centricare would allow them to clock out of Centricare and clock in with us, I think that would be a Centricare call.
But the possibility of them to just be on staff as a part-timer on-call for our ambulance team is what a possibility is.
That is a possibility.
Yes.
And that, I don't think when we discussed it in the meeting in Melrose, we, it was kind of like, they won't necessarily be on-call, but if one comes up, we'd have the chance to call them and say, hey, are you available?
Willing to take it, sure.
Willing to take it, that kind of situation, really wasn't where either Melrose or us were gonna be paying them on-call time besides their normal job, so.
So in the meantime, if that, this does happen, that we have an ALS transfer, and they are going to be using Alina services, correctly?
Alina is the dispatch, right, there's a Mayo ambulance, there's Centricare ambulance out of Painesville, and then there's Monticello, but a lot of times, they have one of their ambulances stationed in St. Joseph.
So it's a, technically could be up to thirty minutes?
It could be.
Depending on weather for?
It could be.
Fifty from Paines.
Now, we're talking transfers where they're already in the hospital, you know, being cared for by a doctor, so it's.
Right.
Because that was a big concern with how quickly an ambulance could get there to transfer.
Yep. And knowing that they still, was there a discussion of like utilizing LifeLink more in those instances, or is that still just not, not something that was discussed? I just imagine, well, I guess they're, they're calling from the cities to get a LifeLink up, so horse a piece for ambulances to make it from.
And, and the doctor's gonna make that call?
Right.
As to how critical that patient, how emergent that is. So sometimes an ALS transfer is an ALS because of the medication, other times, if it's an emergent situation, then that's when the LifeLink gets called. So there's different degrees of what makes it an ALS. In our situation, it's generally a transfer that requires medication. That we are not licensed to administer.
Any other questions? Concerns? What's the council's wishes?
Motion to approve.
Motion from Diane to approve the ambulance transfer memorandum.
I'll second.
Second by Joe. Any last minute discussion? Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. 7B, approved criminal prosecution contract with Stearns County.
So Janelle Kendall, the Stearns County attorney, has presented the city with a 2024-2025 criminal prosecution contract, this is an extension of our existing contract. Stearns County handles the prosecutions for the police department. They are proposing a flat rate of 34,000 per year, which is an eight percent increase over the prior contract, however, the prior contract rate was in place, that rate for four years, so we did not see an increase for four years. Stearns County prosecutes misdemeanor and petty misdemeanor violations of state statute, they also provide victim and witness assistance, civil asset forfeiture, appellate representation, law enforcement training, and 24/7 availability for our law enforcement questions. So what we're looking tonight to do is to authorize execution of the 2024-2025 criminal prosecution contract with Stearns County Attorney's Office.
Questions? Comments?
Just one thing out of curiosity, does that eight percent, I mean, I know you said it wasn't, hadn't been increased over the past four years.
Four years, yeah.
Does it correlate to an uptick in services that they're providing as well?
I, in looking at what they have said when they come and do their annual report, every year, we seem to see a little bit of an increase in the services that we're receiving, so. And when we went to the Stearns County prosecution contracts, we, rather than hiring it independently, we cut up costs, and we're still less than we were back in 2005 when we switched, so.
Any other questions? Otherwise, do I have a motion to authorize the execution?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Joe, second by Heidi. Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. 7C, approved resolution 2023-37, authorizing sale of excess equipment.
We had excess equipment at the Sock Center Fire Department that was offered for sale through the online bidding process with Minbit, and a high bidder was James Hennell, and it was exercise equipment, and the bid amount was 376 dollars, so we're looking to approve resolution 2023-37, authorizing the sale of this excess equipment.
Questions? Comments? Do I have a motion to approve resolution 2023-37?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Heidi, second by Diane. Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. 7D, approved resolution 2023-38, granting variance, Kerfeld.
The Planning Commission, acting as the Board of Adjustment, conducted a public hearing on Tuesday, June 13th, to consider a request for a variance on property located at 700 Grove Lake Street, legally described as parts of Lot 1 and 2, Block 10, Robins and Mendenhall's. It's owned by S. William Property Management, also known as Kelly Kerfeld. The request is for a variance from the rear yard setback requirement of 25 feet, the request is for a setback of 19 feet to the allow construction of a twin home. The Board recommends that the request be approved. So you have in front of you a copy of the survey showing the, where the 19-foot setback would be, and also the resolution 2023-38 granting the variance request.
Questions? Comments? Everybody kind of knows where this property is. Hearing nothing, do I have a motion to approve resolution 2023-38?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Diane, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Joe. Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. 7E, approved resolution 2023-39, granting minor subdivision, Nelson.
CSNP Properties LLC, also known as Cody Nelson, submitted an application for a minor subdivision for property located at 702 Main Street North. The subdivision, if approved, would divide one lot into two conforming lots. Property is described as Lot 3, Block 1 of WH Kate's Gulfview Edition, this is just north of Fairway Pines and south of Main Street or Apartments. Nelson's property has 608.91 feet of frontage on Main Street North, after subdivision, there will be one 103-foot lot and one 505-foot lot, with the expectation that lots will be included in a plat that will be, they're working on now. Water and sewer mains are stubbed to the first parcel, the owner will extend the main lines to service the second and future properties by running a main line parallel to Main Street. Both properties will meet the minimum zoning requirements for an R2 multifamily parcel. Future anticipated subdivision will include a total of 10 units in five buildings. The lot split will allow for the commencement of construction of the first two buildings, one on each lot. So I'm requesting approval of resolution 2023-39, allowing that minor, or authorizing that minor subdivision.
Questions? Concerns? Do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Diane, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Heidi. Any last minute questions? Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. 7F, approved final pay request, Markley Excavating.
So the fifth and final pay request for Markley Excavating for the Aerosmith project has been presented for payment, this is the final pay request and will close out the project. The original contract amount was 412,387 dollars, we did change orders of 77,000 over the project for a total contract of 489,412. Then there was additional work at, so for a total of 527,957, of which 517 had been previously paid, allowing an amount due of 10,559.15 for this project. So we're looking for pay request number five for Markley Excavating for 10,559.15.
Questions? Comments? Do I have a motion to approve pay request number five?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Heidi, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Diane. Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. 7G, approved pay request number two, Keakley Underground.
This is pay request two, as you stated, this is for the Author's Edition project, we had a contract of 1,334,774, they have completed 393,854 to date. After we take out the retainage, they are owed 374,161, of which we had previously paid 137, leaving an amount due of 236,729.06. So now that, with this payment, it'll pretty much cover all the costs for all the grading and the lot grading and the site grading, so then the next step is, as Chuck said earlier, is the dewatering and then starting to put in the water and sewer mains, so the grading part was a major part of this project, which has now been completed. So we're looking to approve pay request number two to Keakley Underground for 236,729.06.
Questions? Concerns? Do I have a motion to approve pay request number two?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Shannon, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Heidi. Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. We have no unfinished business, we have no new business, brings us to the consent agenda. We have the schedule of claims, unpaid claims of 311,908.99 for a total of the same, and May checks paid claims slash payroll of 693,281.36. Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Diane, do I have a second?
I'll.
Second by Heidi. Any last minute questions? Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. And informational items.
Just a few informational items, you have in your packet a letter from the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities. This is an organization that has been around for a long time, and, and each year at budget time, they request that we become a member, and they put in this latest letter, some opportunities for you to connect with them if you want to learn more about what they do. They're an advocacy group for basically smaller cities. It used to be the Coalition of Smaller Cities, and now it's Greater Minnesota Cities, but there is, there's a lot of, they're, they do a lot of legislative work that affects outstate cities, and so they would like to connect and.
cities, and so they would like to connect and see whether you would want to consider becoming a member. We also have the notice from the League of Minnesota Cities, which is, unfortunately, we are going to see a four-and-a-half percent increase in dues for the upcoming year. And so that's another one that they do, is they'll do advocacy at the legislature, they do a lot of policy work, and they do a lot of guidance for cities to stay compliant with state statute. And then the third item I have in there for informational purposes is just the notice of public hearing on the proposed improvement in the preliminary assessments for the Lakeview Drive and Sock Lane project. And this will be at the July fifth city council meeting. That's also the same date that we will be able to open the bids, so we'll be able to move rapidly if you decide to do so at that night. So that is what I have.
Okay. Any questions about any of those? Otherwise, this brings us to the end of our agenda. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Joel, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Diane. Call the question, all those in favor, signify with say and aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against, meeting adjourned.